Hi, it is seven o'clock, time to call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did I have that? Oh yeah, I've been all over everything. Uh, Mr. Sherman, if you'd like to lead us in tonight's prayer.
Please bow your head. Dear Lord, give us the strength to make the proper decisions tonight, to make wise decisions. Give us the strength to make the decisions on ordinances and resolutions for the citizens of Nelsonville, and may everybody, if saved during his COVID, amen.
Amen. Alright, before we call the roll, I'd just like to have a moment of silence for the young man who was passed this weekend. Very sad thing for the family, which is, please have a moment of silence. Alright. Our condolences go out to the family, a very sad, sad thing. Although I never thought I'd ever see in our little backwoods. Um, ma'am, if you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Delkey?
Here.
Grant?
Here.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Okay, um, minutes for the last meeting, if you want to have a chance to review those.
I don't think so, but the question.
You did too, okay. Is there any questions about those, or any council discussion? Okay.
Voice to the board.
I will second that.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Delkey?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Okay, citizens comments, do we have anything, Scott? Nothing yet. Okay, we did have something sent in from Mr. Smith, but due to pending litigation, we're not going to be reading that right now. So, um, on advice of council. So, uh, business and organizational comments, anything? Okay. Committee discussions.
Well, we had a finance meeting on the 26th, if anyone wants to watch.
We do need a utility meeting, Mr. President, and if Thursday is good with you and Scott, because they need to discuss water. Yeah, Scott, help me out, water.
The pickup where we left off for water bill and landlord's names.
Right, okay, yes.
And then, um, I don't remember if there was another one in there or not that we needed to talk about yet.
I think that was the meeting.
Something just came out, I told them I have a chance to look at some of the papers too long. I think it's on page two, might look.
Um.
Page three, Thursday, the 11th, what time are you gonna do it?
Seven.
Thursday on seven, or 11?
At seven.
At seven.
No, not 11.
11, at seven.
That's utilities?
Yeah, it's like 7:11.
Um, so we had a planning and development meeting, where we talked about trash, um, creating some exceptions for people that live on certain streets that can't put their cans away, um, and also some discussion about alleyways, which has not resolved yet, um, also touched about camping, a camping orbit, um, if a campground were to open in town, so we're still working through that, I have a call out to get some clarification on what state regulations are, so like, maybe what we don't need to regulate because it's already regulated.
Right.
You'd have to cross that with the facility code.
Yeah, and then, um, court of judiciary.
Oh, hi. Okay, uh, yeah, we, we had a judiciary meeting, uh, discussed the, uh, the council product, and which was, but the, all that work was terrific, and we have, uh, a pretty much, I think, final, pretty much finalized document that we'll be able to bring, but.
I think so, I think it's been shared, um, with council, um, just for review and any feedback you wanted to provide before we move forward with creating a resolution, Gary, right, that would be the proper way?
Uh, council rules are usually done by motion.
But just by motion, okay, before we bring it forward for a motion, just, um, do you want to meet one more time before we do that?
You guys, we can meet later this week, and if you guys have any comments, you can get it booked.
Yeah, do you want to meet Thursday before that utility meeting?
Sure.
What was it, someone in an email, what do you mean? Uh, it was shared via, via email on OneDrive, yeah, um, okay.
Thursday, you want to do it at six or 6:30?
I think 6:30, I think 30 minutes will be enough. Okay.
That sounds great, so that is, you're almost there for that.
Yeah.
Alright. Anyone else?
Oh, you didn't check?
Oh, we did have a part, maybe, I'm sorry, my mind is.
Oh, well, that was before the special committee, I think we talked about the special.
We did.
Okay, sorry, right?
Alright, so, well, we didn't talk about that next special.
Did we not? Okay, sure, alright, okay.
Okay, um, there's a, there is a proposal from Hawking College to possibly use Crabtree Field, not exchange ownership, no one's going to own it, it's not going anywhere, um, and they haven't proposed several upgrades. It's, uh, pretty outstanding, actually, um, there is a, a lot of upgrades that they had planned on doing, um, they had mentioned making a press box, uh, putting a little turf, putting a fence, uh, doing the infield, uh, the dugouts, because a lot, they need a lot of work supposedly, um, and it's, all in all, as long as, you know, everybody agrees on what goes on, and like to see a plan of, you know, rendering of what they want to do, uh, I think it could be a really great thing. I would love to see Crabtree used for baseball again, and get used one time a year, um, and I think it's a pretty outstanding thing that they are proposing, um, and, and, you know, uh, it says, uh, Hawking shall purchase and install a slot infield, Hawking will replace the dugouts, Hawking will clean the rock seating area and add butt seating at the locations at the top of the elevated areas, um, which, you know, cleaning those rocks would be, that would make that place look amazing, it would really look. So, um, if you have any questions, feel free to please email or contact us, um, if you have any concerns, please, now is the time to voice them.
Does it now affect, really?
I mean, for not, not for citizens.
Well, I'm.
I know you are.
This, this won't affect the old timers game.
No, it's not going to affect the old timers game, it's not going to affect anything that is already scheduled in Nelsonville every day.
So we're still talking about it, right?
We're still talking about it.
And it wouldn't preclude, uh, let's say city rec, posting a game there?
Right, right, yeah.
Once they do it or anything?
Yeah, there's going to have to be a, a, a schedule made, um, and have to bye-bye, and that's just, that's just the way things are used. I'm not trying everything, but it's a schedule.
Because it does say that Nelsonville will have to wait after permission to be able to announce, right?
No. So.
So we can't kick it off with a scheduled game?
No, no.
Then that feels poor.
Yep, we just, we just got to do, get work together, like schedule, and everybody bye-bye. It's just the way it's going. Okay, but yes, um.
So is this how we publish your reasons?
Oh, you printed it off? I don't know. I, this is the first time I've actually seen that for first.
Me too.
So I don't.
Seen it like half hour ago.
I think, I think we should probably get back to the.
We're waiting back.
Anything to go back and tell me, yeah.
Just go up there.
Go from there, so, alright, and, do you have a police department update?
Unfortunately, not this evening, sir, the, uh, the goats forgot about it, so that's.
That's okay, I saw they were busy, busy up on the mountain again.
They were, uh, it's been a very busy day up there, it's actually been a busy last two weeks with the amount of narcotics that's taken off the street, I'd hate to comment on how much, but I do know it's a pretty significant amount, and of course, um, all day, sort of the weekend, you know, those guys, uh, were both departments, police and fire, absolute professionals, and kind of handle situations, so.
Yes.
Very proud of all of them.
Yeah, they had, definitely had a rough weekend.
Archie's here if you want to take a note.
We don't have an hour.
Not on the agenda.
We don't have an hour, okay, yeah, so, alright, so, here we go.
Let's, I need a motion to amend the agenda to add 11 dash 20, 11 dash 20.
One, I'm sorry, 21.
11 dash 21, and ordinance creating sanitary funds under 30 and declaring emergency, a motion for that.
I'll, I'll make that motion to the man.
There's two more.
And, there's two more.
Alright.
You've got to add the fire approval, the fire.
Oh, okay.
And. Oh, right there, 15 dash 21. Alright, and then, uh, a little. And also, uh, motion to appoint Keller Blackburn, representing us, pending litigation with, uh, Mr. Smith.
I'll make that motion to the man.
Thank you for saying that.
Thanks. We're good.
Yes, hold on, hold on.
Okay, we already have a motion.
Where are we? I'll second that.
Okay, hold on. Okay, be ready for roll call.
We're ready.
Mr. Delkey?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Okay, um.
Oh, introduce 11-21, sanitation fund, and ordinance creating the sanitation fund number 730 and declaring emergency. Whereas sanitation fund needs to be created because the city has agreed to do billing for refuse and recycling in the city. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The city of Nelsonville creates the san- sanitation fund number 730. This ordinance hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public, health, and safety of said city of Nelsonville, to allow time to set up the fund to receive the money's billed, and this ordinance shall be in full force effective from, and immediately after its passage. The Julian Act by Council on Pursuiting of Suspended Rules is the eighth day of March, 2021.
Any council discussion on this?
Push this through.
I'll second that.
Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Delkey?
Yes.
Which one's up?
Okay. Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Delkey?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Alright, we got 15 dash 21. Okay, ordinance 15 dash 21, need someone to introduce it?
An ordinance adopting a labor contract with service workers and declaring emergency. Whereas the Senate of Labor, Labor Agreement has been reached with the service workers. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The labor agreement with the service workers effective January 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2023, attached here to and incorporated herein direct as adopted. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to a higher revised code, 731.30, because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary because the contract is retroactive to January 1st, 2021, and shall be in full force effective upon its adoption. The Julian Act by Council on Pursuiting Under Suspended Rules is the eighth day of March, 2021.
Any council discussion on that?
On this, it's 10.
I'll second that.
Mr. Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Delkey?
Yes.
And Grant?
Yes.
Yes. Oh.
Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Delkey?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
So, ordinance. 12 dash 21.
That was 12.
That was 12.
12.
13.
13 dash 21.
All introduced, thank you. An ordinance amending the 2021 appropriations ordinance to appropriate for the unappropriated balance as following. Thirty-five thousand dollars in the general fund number 100, to line item number 100 dash 100 dash 10065, other employee costs, seven thousand dollars from the recreation fund number 300, to line item number 300 dash 800 dash 33020, school repairs. Whereas the appropriations ordinance needs to be amended to appropriate money for fully cost of school repairs. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The 2021 appropriations are amended to appropriate the following sum from the unappropriated balance to the designated line item. Thirty-five thousand dollars from general fund number 100, to line item number 100 dash 100 dash 10065, other employee costs, seven thousand dollars from the recreation fund number 300, to line item number 300 dash 800 dash 33020, school repairs. The total appropriations are set at a mass, this ordinance shall be subject to the earliest date provided by law. The Julian Act by Council on Pursuiting the 22nd day of March, 2021.
Alright, move to the first reading. Okay, ordinance 14 dash 21, I need to interview.
An ordinance authorizing city managers to sell real estate, vehicles, and equipment not needed for a public purpose at bid or auction. Whereas the city manager has recommended that the city sell real estate, vehicles, and equipment not needed for public purpose. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The city manager is authorized to sell the following real estate, vehicles, and equipment not needed for a public purpose by bid or auction. Land parcel number P030040004800, the triangle at Verity, Scott, and Hudson Street, minimum bid one hundred dollars for the field bid. Parcel P030040004900, the triangle at Verity, Scott, and Hudson Street, also minimum bid of one hundred dollars for the field bid. Parcel P30, I'm sorry, P03014000500126JeffersonStreet, minimum bid seven thousand dollars for the field. Parcel P03014000601, Jefferson Street, lot behind 126 Jefferson, minimum bid of one hundred dollars for the field bid. And parcel number P030140003800, and that's additional lot behind 126 Jefferson, minimum bid of one hundred dollars for the field bid. Vehicles, 1987 Ford F700, VIN number 1C, I'm sorry, 1FDSF70H8ABA64471, via online auction. A 1990 M998 Gasol Humvee, number 100616, and a 1989 M998 Dodge Humvee, number 069870. The equipment includes VIN Dr. Val exercises number 114745, online auction, and parking meter parts, online auction. This ordinance shall be in effect at the earliest when it's committed by law. The Julian Act by Council on Pursuiting the 22nd day of March, 2021.
Alright. Ordinance 15 dash 21.
All introduced. An ordinance adopting a labor contract with fire department and declaring an emergency. Whereas the Senate of Labor Agreement has been reached with fire department. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The labor agreement with fire department effective January 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2023, attached here to and incorporated herein direct as adopted. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to a higher revised code, 731.30, because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary because the contract is retroactive to January 1st, 2021, and shall be in full force effective upon its adoption. The Julian Act by Council on Pursuiting Under Suspended Rules is the eighth day of March, 2021.
Alright, any council discussion on that? Motion to suspend.
On this, it's a fact.
Say.
Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Delkey?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes. Which two, John?
Thank you.
Mr. Delkey?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Booth?
Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Okay, we're to 11, um, there's been some discussions, Scott, currently working without contracts. And there's been several discussions along, uh, length in terms of contract, but there's a motion to extend the city manager's contract, that is up for discussion, um, and.
So, yeah, I mean, like, are we just extending, I mean, kind of indefinitely until we do a review?
We can extend it indefinitely, but there's, there's also, you know, we need to discuss time.
Right, well, I, I, I thought that originally we talked about in January, and I know, like, I'm kind of.
It's all a while, yeah, three months later.
Um, that we were talking about appointing, like, a, like a review committee, and doing the goal setting, and some other things, so I, I don't know, like, what the process is, if there is a process.
We've never had a process like that, I'll be honest with you.
We didn't, we never had that, we think.
We never had a review committee, or a goal setting, or anything like that.
Okay.
Somebody works at a university.
You were the first one we ever.
Right, but I also think that for our discussion, am I right, that we didn't have contracts, they were just hired?
No, they were.
Oh, they had, okay.
Yeah, we had.
Well, we never had a complete one, Chuck, right? Because it just was never kind of.
Yeah, he's always been in a contract.
Yeah.
Okay, why do you think, I mean, in fairness, Scott, that's doing, I, in my opinion, a great job, um, he, he deserves to have a proper review, um, and a session about what he would like, you know, to set up goals, I think, as a, as a group, we need to talk about what are we looking at as far as the contract, do you want to do?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to extend it to the end of the year pending, uh, our review, um, and discussion, and then a discussion about it, and then, um, but I would also like to make a motion to raise him up to what Chuck was making, which was 60,000, he's at 57,500 right now, and I would like to boot up him up to six, to sixty, to where the previous manager was.
We shouldn't just do that, the motion should be.
Well, I'll second that motion.
I don't know that, I guess my thing is, not that I don't want to send it to the end of the year, but I think if we're going to redo his contract, like, do we want to say that, we want to set a goal of having it done by May 1st?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, let's send it to May 1st.
So, let's, let's extend it to May 1st, then we're going to redo it.
Extend it to May 1st, and then we'll do it, we'll get his contract.
And then to me, a lot of this is about being fair to Scott, so that he gets, there's this problem.
Yeah, let's do, let's do May 1st.
Huh? Yeah.
Let's do May 1st, and we'll get everything filed out, get it done.
So we're going to review it for, that, have the council or.
Well, usually, but Gary, like, we print it out. We had an actual.
Are we allowed to have a subcommittee?
I can give you the other contract.
Are we allowed to have, like, a smaller, like, committee of council people to, like, be, like, to do the review, or whatever?
Well, so.
Well, we've been down past, there was an annual review down at the council. Yeah, we have a review that we send out, and we can do that again, and send it out, send to a review, and as far as the contract service of basis, we then decide which one.
Okay, I think if Scott's comfortable with that, that's about saying.
Scott, can you work it out, contract till May 1st?
You know.
No, why don't we just.
No, we, like, we're going to extend his current contract to May.
Okay, I'm going to say May 1st.
I want community service.
Um, you're getting paid.
Oh, you're getting paid.
You're not a volunteer, um, our first lay council meeting, our first lay council meeting is May 10.
So let's do it by May 10.
So, extend to May 10, and then.
Alright, great.
I mean, you guys are getting busy sending out those reviews.
Yeah, right, that's fine, when I was at school, we were developing it with the tracker, different. Yeah. What kind of review form? Yes. Sounds good.
Motion to extend, is that right?
Motion to extend his contract until May 10.
Thank you.
Thank Taylor, we did that, we're okay.
That's right.
What?
They changed, they changed.
Yeah, I, I. Can I, can I ask for verification from the council?
Yes.
Is, is that, does that address the pay motion as well, or just the contract extension?
We're just going to keep it right there.
The first motion died.
I know, yeah, because they're like, I don't want to network.
Now the new motion is same, the same salary, so. Does, does have to be made then.
We're ready.
Right, well, you could just.
Yeah, we can do it too, we're just saying, like, we're going to extend.
That's the deadline.
That's our deadline, but it gives us a tangible deadline, unfortunately, I think what happened before is we said we were going to do it, and then other things came up, and we got five drafts.
Oh, absolutely, that discussion actually started in January, okay.
Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Joe?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Delkey?
Yes.
Alright, so. Oh, and, uh, I need a motion to have Keller represent us in the future legal proceedings where Mr. Smith. I believe, I believe it turned into the county prosecutor, or the county prosecutor or deputy.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Delkey?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Furman, we also, we, we, we need to review about that, uh, liquor, transfer of liquor.
Okay, yeah, we got something sent to us, um.
I have this one, but do you have another?
No, that was it.
Uh, for sure.
For sure.
For choice.
For adventure pro.
For adventure pro. Um.
For the board, Mr. President, we only have to amend the agenda.
We will have the agenda. Um, motion to amend the agenda to discuss and approve the liquor license.
Okay.
Back. So. You're not really approving your business. I'll be not objecting to that. Or you don't have an issue with.
So he just wants to move it from where it is up on Canal Street and further down.
Yes.
From, so from the little deli carry, but I thought he was keeping that little deli carry out there.
They might keep something in there.
He said he was moving his liquor, didn't he?
Yeah, he's moving the liquor there, but he's going to keep something out there.
When you say liquor.
Point of order, Mr. President, do we need to vote on motion?
Oh, sorry.
Yes. Yeah. Are you talking about that, Mr. President?
I'm sorry.
Where was it?
Call it all, please.
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
DeBusschere?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Mr. DeBusschere?
Yes.
So Mr. President?
The new motion, that's. Uh, yeah, see, what he, what he, I spoke to him today, actually saw him, um, and he said they were going to do the liquor down there.
When you say liquor, you mean, they don't actually sell liquor, right?
No, 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 alcohol, beer and wine, there you go. That should be, that's proper terminology, beer and wine. Down to the other store. And they were going to probably keep another sort of store there, like just a general store. Just sell snacks, pop and firewood.
Okay.
With the bait and, you know, stuff like that, I'm sure, so.
I'm sure, I think, that's the news for they would have a lot more room.
They do.
Or.
I got to see it today, it is absolute.
Okay.
So. Um. So we have a motion not to object. Transfer. I'm looking at that. All right, the second time.
Taylor?
Yeah.
Sherman?
Yes. Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Tuesday, I think. Okay. We are down to the city manager's support. Scott, Frank, if you would take it away.
Yes, I will try to get through this pretty quickly. Um, the Woodland Bridge pre-construction meeting is next week, so I will have more dates, but that is in the process, uh, moving. Starting to take off now. April first, Church Street's supposed to begin construction, so there will be blockage headed up that way. Um, they already have a plan in place to allow emergency vehicles to buy, and then also to not completely shut down. They'll be able to move out of the way for residents, but I do believe. The latest plan was to make contact with the residents and try and set, you know, hours that will be the easiest. And then, of course, if something comes up, they'll work with it. Um, I don't know if you guys noticed coming in, if it was still daylight, that, uh, the street. Guys or the utility guys cleared off the bank out here for prep tree build, they cleaned a lot of the, uh. Brush that was there and got rid of the tree branches that were a hazard. So that can be enjoyed by folks to go fishing or whatever they would like to do down there. Except for live. Um, the update on Jefferson and Fayette Street, so. As most of you know, there was a major water line break at Jefferson and Fayette. There was significant undermining of the, uh. Sub base below the concrete, that's why the intersection's still closed. The way forward is to stabilize the concrete that's there. Uh, the quote we got, the best quote we got was, uh, sixty five hundred dollars to inject foam in there to stabilize it. And after the foam is done, or before. I'm not sure chicken or egg on this one, it's probably going to, uh, depend on, uh, availability, but we also got a quote for concrete of eighteen thousand. To replace, repair the concrete that's there to make it look like the red brick, excuse me. So all in all. In addition to all the other repairs, shouldn't be. Some public land here. Twenty four, twenty five thousand dollars in addition to the parts that the guys are putting in there as well to make sure it doesn't begin. Also. Uh, in addition to that, upstream where the valve failed, the new valve needs to be put in, and those are fourteen thousand dollars each. So, uh, that will be installed soon as well. No action.
Guarantee on that foam and concrete.
That's how they lift up concrete slabs all over the place, uh, it's the.
I mean, if the foam or whatever should fail, is there.
Guarantee it will work.
Yeah, for sure. Or they replace it for free or whatever fails.
Yeah, I can certainly ask that question.
Usually.
Yes, fine.
One year.
Also, the reason why that, I'm sorry, the reason why that valve is so expensive is so you could replace it with the water being a lot.
Correct, it's an insertion.
We didn't, we were not going to need a boil order for five days or anything like that.
No.
There's a reason, in a way, it's so expensive.
So the other alternative, if I may just explain it, so instead of foam, the other alternative was injecting a slurry. And, uh, the slurry was significantly more price, but it's the same principle, they drill a bunch of holes and they inject it until they see that the other hole starts to come out, then they jump down. Inject it and they just keep rocking all the way down through, it's like a live slurry. Um, concrete, um, mortar.
Mortar.
Yeah. Mortar hydraulic, uh, concrete. How is it?
Hydrogen cement.
Uh, so my question is, is. Eighteen thousand dollars to do that little bit of stamp concrete?
So we've only had one bid come in so far, so I know if nothing else, that's worst case scenario, so we have more other bids that we're just waiting to get back. So.
Is that being, is that.
The red brick.
Is it just bricks? And it's not star brick, yeah, which is.
Regular.
Regular.
So we, we get multiple quotes on everything, so, uh, that's the number I have, so worst case scenario, that's, uh, we're lucky to be less than. So the timeframe of the tear is really just temperature dependent more than anything, so. Um, right now, I know after they get the insertion valve, what's the valve that they put in? That, uh, they take the water alive, they cost the fourteen thousand, they're going to replace another valve. Which, uh, won't have any major impact significantly cheaper because they'll actually be able to isolate. So right next to where that break was. Uh, was another valve that was broken, so now that's all going to get replaced through there and a more permanent fix. Right now it just has a band on it, so they're going to take it out, use their fancy connectors, put a new piece of pipe in. And new valve and reattach it to the fire heater. So it will be put back away correctly. Okay, any more questions on it?
Um. One thing that I thought of, and I just, I spoke to Dan about it, um, and actually spoke to him about it. Um, I don't know how much it costs, but in the future. A boring machine. So, um, I actually, it's about a hundred and sixty thousand for a setup for a, it goes up to six inch. And, because any bigger machine would be impractical, they call it a service line machine. So the setup is a hundred and sixty and the, uh. Any bigger than that, it would be impractical for running a service line, it'd be too big. That's the, Carla, do you know what the boring is, the motion?
Yeah, Dan.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just thought we would want to sometime look at that, just because if you, if you start weighing the costs of digging up. Road streets.
That's a very good argument for my point of capital. Yeah, we'll go there.
Okay, we'll go there, and we'll. So, um.
Later.
But, um, yeah, it's one of those things where instead of having, you know, spend the money and the time and the manpower to dig all that up. When you do bore underneath of it.
I just want you people to know, I'm not just another brief fix.
We. Anyway, um, that's all I have, so.
I have plenty more, so I would just like to share with you the upcoming grants. That we currently have in the queue that we're, uh, starting to submit for, no extra required unless we actually get selected, if you guys want to do it or not, um. And if you don't want me to do any of these, that's fine too, just let me know. The first one we're working on is an AARP grant, which caters to seniors. Uh, we're putting together a list of, uh, sidewalk pieces to attach the community center, uh, senior center behind, um. What is that, uh? Not Taco Bell, the, uh, Family Dollar, the one behind Family Dollar. With crosswalk, um, signage, flash and signage. Then over to Poplar, down to Curver, and then where the concrete wasn't replaced on, uh, not Poplar, sorry, Chestnut. Where the concrete wasn't replaced on Chestnut toward McDonald's, replace all that to ADA standards. Which then encompasses the county home and then curve around by McDonald's and go down Fayette Street. To the square to capture Nelson Commons, or Nelsonville Commons. Excuse me, again. So that's what we're putting together to submit to those folks, which would be really nice tying all those pieces together, especially considering the stuff that the city's put into those areas already. Another grant that we're putting forward is small cities grant for ODOC, uh, this will be twenty twenty four. The way that works, only certain streets qualify, so, uh, for us, the only streets that qualify were two seventy eight, seventy eight, Canal Street. Borough Boulevard. And I think one more, but I can't remember what it was.
Six ninety one?
Six ninety one, yeah. So what the, uh, engineers are putting together is the, all the measurements that would be required to do Canal Street from six ninety one to the roundabout. And then also Borough Boulevard up over Mason City Hill and stop at the overpass. So we don't have any word, we're just putting that, preparing it to submit as we speak. That has a five percent match, so if we get selected for that one, and just a hypothetical number, if it's two million dollars, our share would be a hundred thousand. But that's several years out to allow us to plan for it when we get selected. Another one is a water EPA grant similar to the one that we got this year. The, that one we just submitted. That one includes extending a ten inch line down Canal Street around toward Hocking College. To improve our pressure and volume of water over down six ninety one area and the backside of Hocking College. Uh, I'm just using the college as a marker to create a loop. The other area is from the old TB Hospital, JR Prison, down Ludlane Drive. And making another loop to better support local with pressure and volume over there as well. The, there's a couple, or there's lots of other. Smaller pieces in there, those are the big nuggets, and then the other nugget, this is an update that you guys haven't asked us, so I want to share it with you. That also includes the water line under the river, so, yeah. So the water line under the river, just an update on that. Is the amount of money that we've appropriated for it. Is significantly less than what's needed to get it done. So boring under would be significantly more money. And as far as the digging it out and pouring it across, that doesn't seem to be very, um, appealing to EPA at this point. Nor, uh, many contractors, if that makes any sense. So damming the river creates a lot of, I wish I found a better solution, and I'm still looking for another solution. But currently, the best solution I have is rolling it up in this grant for now. So we should get an answer on that, hopefully in a month if we get it.
And then. When would that be? Um, construction, if we got that?
Next spring?
So you're still thinking about pouring underneath?
That's the, from what I'm being told, I'm no expert on that, that's the best way to go. Because if we dig out anything in the river, we are messing with the oysters, I think, and there are mussels, mussels in there. And, um, and then also the, the flow of the river, there was just a whole lot of, uh, calculations that need to be done and how long the water is going to be backed up for, how deep and flow and. There's a whole bunch of stuff with it, so. Uh, that's where we rolled that up in there. And then the last one that we're getting ready to apply for is the USDA grant. That's the one we've received in the past for, I mean, the street sweeper and police cars. Good news is they've upped the limit, so, um. We have four quotes put together, which includes a skid steer for utilities department, a track hoe for utility department. And a utility tractor. And one more trailer, which comes up to about a hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred thousand of that would be granted, and then on top of that, which we won't know until we get approved or not approved. Is small, or what is it, um? Is it, uh? It's a different pot of money set aside for continuously, continuous poverty, and there's only two states or two counties in the state, us and Benton County. So that's the money that we can go after as well to stack on top of that. So more to come, again, we're just trying to put it in the hat and see if we can even get it approved, and if we get it in the hat, then we'll bring it back to you with all the details. And press forward, unless I'm missing something I need to do that first, please let me know.
Well, the skid steer that we had is pretty old, I mean, it's.
And the track hoe is getting into it quickly.
So the, the new one, I think that Scott's proposing is a, uh, track stunt wheel, which is a lot easier on surfaces. Can go in muddier spots without.
Go by any mark, yeah.
So those are all on same bid, same bid pricing, so the, uh, skid steer and the track hoe would be a John Deere. And then the utility tractor is a bin track. And then trailer is just whatever, you know.
So the, the track hoe is bigger than what we've got, right?
Significantly better, error's bigger, sorry, this one we'll be able to do ditching with. We'd also be able to do repairs that require, uh, a lot more depth than what we.
How deep do we go with the new track?
Sam?
How deep can we go with the new track?
I think it's twelve feet. Maybe more, the other one's only like six. Yeah, it's not deep at all, so. So that'll be good if we get it, so. Question?
You guys? No, it's good.
Maybe we should, Sam thinks he's driving around.
Yeah, no, no.
Right? I don't think I'm going to.
Hitching for a spin around town?
I'm with you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you there.
Um. I never pulled over, really.
Yeah. So in addition to the, to the utility guys, um, you know, doing our several repairs around and cleaning up, they got all the stumps grinded out, or the. That we had during the time that we had the equipment, so they've been really, uh, doing very well and producing quite good, so. Very happy with those guys as well. Good. All right, thanks.
Well, thank you, Scott. All right. Um. It was. No, Hocking College is not taking over the baseball fields. That's what.
Didn't you say that?
I did, said that three times. The other, oh, here we go.
Our authority council mentioned code of conduct be available for public talks. Will the code of conduct document be available for public talks?
On the council?
That's code of conduct, right? Yes, that. We'll make it available when it's, uh, so to that question, Glenda, everything that says, um, the code of conduct document, once we have, um. Formalized it and, and finalized things, we will make it available, um, probably actually put it on the website so that everybody can see it.
Let me just throw it all over social media once it's on.
Once it's, yeah.
Once we get it down.
Once we get it done, yeah.
All right, uh, good to be ordered, we'll lead off with Carla tonight.
Don't have anything for.
Okay. Right? To the later, um. I saw a hopeful sign of spring on Facebook, though, sitting in a parking lot, we're committed tonight. Uh, baseball and softball signups are going to be. March sixteenth, nineteenth, city park from five to seven. Uh, everywhere from T-ball to girls' softball, little league boys. Uh. Let the kids out there play as we can, uh, you know, since last year. Let's, uh, really go enjoy our, our city parks, every, you know, we put a lot of work into them, but let's, uh, make that happen.
Um, the only I want to say is, uh, again, a reminder about vaccines, um. So vaccine has become a lot more available in the last couple of weeks, um, at pharmacies. Uh, so not just through the health department and a couple of locations in the county now, actually, uh, you know, Shriver's, Fruit, CBS, um.
Hopewell.
Hopewell. Um, Walmart, I'm trying to think here, um. I don't understand some, uh, like, the pharmacy at Cash Trip Center, I mean, basically all kinds of pharmacies, um, have it. So if you're looking for appointments, the governor lowers the eligibility age today to anyone fifty years old and older. Uh, so that really opens it up a lot, um, a lot of places like Shriver's in Athens and Logan, I, I looked today before I came here, had a number of appointments still available for this week. So I encourage you, um. To sign up, if you don't have computer access, I don't know how you'd be watching, uh, but if you have, um, trouble, ask a friend or a neighbor to help you get signed up, um, you can also call these places. ask a friend or a neighbor to help you get signed up, um, you can also call these places um, and get on their list. Um, so anyway, the sooner we get people vaccinated, the sooner hopefully things can get back, back to normal.
Um, I just wanna, you know, uh, say thank you to um police department, the fire department, all the first responders, uh, this weekend, it's kind of traumatic, and uh appreciate all that they did, and, and just uh I hope they all look after each other. Kind of tough thing for them, and hopefully, uh, you know, they at least talk to each other. It was a rough experience for them, so I appreciate them putting themselves on the line in situations like that, and uh, just hope they take care of themselves. You know, and talk to each other, and just try to support each other.
Okay, my turn, uh, yeah, I'd also, I feel that as well, uh I probably, if I'd thought about it beforehand, I would have put down a thanks prayer, but, uh, you know, wishing the, the families and giving to friends and first responders and police department. It's, it's, it's a tough thing to go through, you see. With God's will, you'll, you'll get through it. Seek help, yeah. That being said, we would like to let you know we're gonna have a chili cook-off on the square on April seventeenth. So Star Brick has already committed to Star Brick, uh Bar Q's already committed to putting in chili. Of course, the fire department over here that won first place two years ago with his vegetable soup. Uh.
Are you cooking, Dan?
I'm gonna have chili, Shermanator chili.
I'll know which side of the street they're going.
So, uh, it'll be in there as well, uh. Police chief said that they would be submitting a chili as well. Uh, so if anybody would like to sign up, uh, contact Johnny Mac or myself, and uh, we're still looking for volunteers to help. So, uh, and then seventeenth of April.
Where is it?
On the square. Uh, we'd also like to let you know that we're gonna have the Vinnie's Camper. Uh, again, June fifth on the square, we did two years ago, and it's a big, big success, so we'd like to have that again as well. Uh. Would also need volunteers to help with that as well, uh. So all the money and proceeds go to the city, and we'll try and set up some type of fund, we haven't discussed yet, where but, you know, for maybe a scholarship for a child to go to summer camp, or or something like that, it'll, it'll, it'll be gone to a good cause for children in the city. So whether it be a scholarship for school, or
Generally.
Cool passes?
Cool passes, you know, so we're, we're, you know, we're we'd love for Elizabeth to involve in helping with that.
I would love to, but I make a mean chili, I mean, I, I have-
So we're looking for nice.
You, you saying nice.
Well, unfortunately, I am going to not be in town that day.
Oh, I'm sorry. You heard it, Shermanator chili.
Yeah, there it is.
You heard the Shermanator chili, didn't you, you're done.
You better hope W. Cox doesn't matter.
Talking about the peanut gallery.
I hope everybody's down, so. The more entries, the better, uh. Again, I'll be, I'll be making the trophies again this year, I made them for a couple of years in a row. Uh, they're pretty cool.
Yeah, what Shermanator is called, what are they made out of, Dan?
Huh?
What are they made out of?
So I, I do like a little glass pot. And, and I make it look like a big chili pot, and hope people would.
Oh, that's the trophy?
Yeah, so Drake has two of them, so, you know, he wanted me to say it.
Three.
I would have made two of them, though. Uh, so anyhow, that being said, I, I hope you guys will join in, again, contact myself and Johnny Mac. Uh, AKA Johnny Flowers. If you guys didn't know, Johnny Mac, uh.
Maybe you can make like an event for everybody to share, I think, sign up for it online.
Alright, um, okay, we don't need any team. I uh, I wanna echo Corey's comments, Dan, um. You know, having, having a ten-year-old son myself, uh after what happened this weekend, really really makes you think about what's important in life. And uh, we deal with so many things in our lives, we sometimes you can lose track of what's important. And uh you know, I spent several hours just imagining emotions that they were going through, and I just can't figure it out, so I, it's just stunning, and uh I'd also like to tell, or I'd like to say thank you very much to our utilities departments, uh, you know, the police and fire department always get the headlines. Uh, and they, what, does, you know, very deservedly so, but at the same time, uh, our guys did a great job on the water leaks, and they always do, uh. Those guys are fearless. They jump in holes with mud, water spraying everywhere, cold water. And I just like to tell them, I don't think they get enough credit sometimes, I'd just like to tell them thank you, so. Uh. That's all I have, so a uh a motion to go into executive session uh for one twenty-one dash twenty-two G for personal and legal matters and pending litigation.
So who? Who are you inviting in?
I'm inviting, um, Taylor, uh, the auditor, the uh law director, and city manager.
I'll make that motion.
One second. Ready, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't exactly think that was. Alright, we're back, uh, need a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll make that motion, one second. Dan?
I'm involved.
Oh, Corey is, okay.
Do you need a
Yes.
A motion to appoint me as a jury?
Do we?
Yes. Yes, please, you need to come out of executive session.
I'm in executive session first. Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to make, uh, Mr. Taylor fit uh temporary clerk.
One second.
Uh. Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.